Yes.
I'm going to call the Planning Commission meeting to order for
You're the man.
July 22, 2020. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. And Pledge of Allegiance.
We just.
With the United States.
The United States of America.
And to the Republic.
For which is.
For which is.
Dance.
One nation.
Under God.
Indivisible.
Was liberated.
The unjustly.
Thank you, everyone. Item number three is roll call. Whitey, please.
Chris Hiltonen. Whitey Simon here. Christine Holcomb.
Holcomb?
Holcomb, sorry.
Eric. I didn't.
Harold Bane. Harold Bane. Harold.
He's muted.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, are you here?
I'm here.
Mark Borchardt.
Here.
Tom Cozel.
Here.
Robert Musling.
Here.
Keith Bell.
He's absent and excused.
And Kathy A. Schweickert.
I am here. Thank you, Whitey. Item number four is approval amendments to agenda.
Madam Chair, make a motion to approve the agenda as submitted.
Second.
Any discussion? If not, Whitey, roll call, please.
Keith Bell, excused. Chris Hiltonen.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Bane.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Musling.
Here.
Yes.
Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you, everyone. Item number five is approval of minutes.
I move.
Yes.
Say it again, please.
Do we want to discuss it before or do we want to approve and then discuss?
Approval and then discuss, how's that?
Okay. So moved.
Motion.
I move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Any discussion?
Who has the minutes? Because I don't.
They were sent via email.
Yeah, I just. Couple days ago.
Cindy sent everything via email.
June 24.
She said she sent it to me, but I didn't see it. But let me check.
They were with the agenda on the 21st of July.
Yes.
I know she didn't prepare a package for us, so.
No, we, and Cindy and I talked about it because of circumstances out of everybody's control. There wasn't really a packet other than the email she sent. So that's why Saving Cost Factor sent the email. But she did do an attachment to the front just to let you know what you needed to. See what's in there.
All right, go ahead.
Um, so I think we have a motion, second discussion.
The only. The only thing that I noticed and found on the last page, the second line from the bottom, I believe it is. It says, oh geez, it says in instead of is.
Oh. Okay.
Don't laugh.
Sorry.
Do you have it in front of you?
I'm looking at it.
You see it?
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, disagree with you, yeah.
Okay. That was the only thing that I found. The rest seemed to be pretty good.
Okay, on my agenda, if it's in there, it says I cannot download it, so I'm voting no.
But we haven't got to the vote part. Any other discussion?
Whitey, please repeat what, what correction?
Last page. Look at the second line from the bottom. In the sentence, something is supposed to be is, and it says it.
Okay, thank you.
See it?
In all the way instead of fence is.
Got it.
Are you all set, Sue?
Paul Burgess's comment.
I have it, thank you.
Any further comments, discussion? If not hearing any, Whitey, please do roll call.
Keith Bell.
Absent excused.
Thank you. Chris Hiltonen.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb.
Yes.
Harold Baines.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
No.
Tom Cozel.
Yes.
Robert Musling.
Yes.
And Kathy A. Schweickert.
Yes, thank you, Whitey. Item number six is new business. We don't have anything under new business at this point, so I'm going to move on to item number seven, which is unfinished business. We have three items. The first item is 6509 Dyke reuse reoccupancy.
Could the host allow me to share the screen, please?
Chris, did you already do that? Christine?
I'm working on it.
Share the screen.
Oops.
I.
I'm losing things.
Yeah, I clicked share and it, it doesn't let me do that.
I got it now, it's working. Is it, can you see that PowerPoint?
There we go.
There you go. Got it.
Got it, okay. So item 7A is reuse reoccupancy applications for 6509 Dyke Road. This was last considered in March of 2019. I'm not, I don't have a lot of information to present with this one, but we'll just go through the last review we did in 2019. So the consideration is a reuse of a non-residential building. It was formerly Colony Marine. The applicant at the time was proposing offices for rent as well as personal storage and to continue using an existing residential apartment on the second floor. So the request before you would be to determine if the proposed uses of the property are similar to the former Colony Marine use, which includes the office and storage components. Or another option would be to allow the personal interior storage as an accessory use to the proposed offices, which are allowed in the C2 zoning district. And then the third option is to determine that personal storage is not permitted. And the applicant, I believe, is on the meeting tonight and may have some more information on the uses occurring in the building. At the time of the discussion last year, a couple issues were discussed. First was the non-conforming structure and the non-conforming site as far as adding landscaping through removing pavement in order to meet the zoning ordinance requirement of 7.5% of site landscaping. The second issue was the existing parking layout. At the time, the applicant was proposing 18-foot-long 90-degree parking spaces in front of the site. And there were some concerns with this, given that the site has three driveways on the Dyke Road. Concerns with the 15-foot access drive in front of those spaces and with those access drives, just that, that, that might be tight there in the right-of-way. Eight of the spaces for the site are on the front in the right-of-way, and then there are five on that top side of the building that are outside of the right-of-way. And then lastly, we pointed out the on-screen dumpster signs related to Colony Marine and lighting as other improvements related to the proposal. So that's all I have, and you may want to hear from the applicant on this proposal.
Thank you for your presentation. Is it Mike from Timberwood representing the applicant or? You're muted? I don't hear him. Can anybody hear him?
Nope.
Nope.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So you can hear me and see me?
Yes.
Can hear you.
I hear you.
Okay. Well, this project kind of, you know, one reason why it's taken so long is kind of, you know, kind of is changing a little bit. Getting a little less involved interior with the interior. The, you know, my, my client really wants to just replace a door on the front and then also wants to change one of the big windows into an overhead door and also with an entry door going in. Now, basically, as, as far as the, the offices go, the proposed offices, that's kind of, that's off the table for now. He, he just wants to add these doors. And he also obviously wants to fix up the parking lot. And, you know, we, we submitted that site plan previously at the, at the last meeting, I believe. I know it's been a long time, it's even hard for me to remember, but I do have it pulled up. But basically, he just wants to add these doors. We're not doing anything into the interior at this time. And we're looking to see, you know, what has to be done with this parking lot. I realize that 7.5% does have to become landscaped. That that sounds like a pretty obvious one. And basically, just trying to get feedback to make sure that what I submit next, hopefully, I can, you know, get a, get a permit for him because he really wants to do pretty minimal stuff right now. So that's what I'm looking at.
Okay.
And just to, and just to, sorry Kathy, and just to explain what, what the process is. So when a use in a building changes, there's a couple different procedures that could apply. In this case, we looked at it as a reuse since there were no, since there were minimal site improvements. So the request, the specific request for you is to determine that the interior use of the building is okay based on what was there before. And then we can work through site improvements and building improvements later. But the reuse determination has to occur first before he can get through building permits and things like that.
Can you a little closer to the mic, please?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, now I can.
Are, were you referring to Matt or referring to the applicant?
No, Matt.
Oh, sorry, Whitey. So, so yeah, so I was just explaining that this reuse determination has to occur first. And then permits will be allowed once that, once that is closed out. So that's why this is coming before you again, related to building improvements.
Did you get that, Whitey?
Yeah, oh yeah, I got that. Apparently, the dog did too.
Apparently so. Okay, any other?
Well, this, you gotta do this before we get the entrance ways and everything else worked out, the.
I'd like to say, what, what kind of, I'd like to go back to the overhead door and, and the door. That, that's going to be in the front and what, what that is going to look like. And apparently with the overhead door, you're going to be unloading and loading from that area on the front?
Yes, he's, he's going to be pulling, you know, trailers in and out at that point. Right now, there's an overhead door on the very left of the, of the building that is, I believe it's just like a white door. He, he really, really all he does need is to, he just needs insulated overhead doors. And that's really all he wants. I suppose if it came down to an ordinance thing where he would have to put like, like a gas station-type look door, you know, for the aesthetics, you know, he would look at that option, obviously. But, you know, right now, he, he just want, wants like these doors. The, the entry door, we can, that would be a glass door.
Ah, there we go.
Okay, Matt, can I ask a question? Not Matt, Eric, sorry, I apologize. Um, our first question, though, is to determine if this is a reuse. It's permitted for the interior of the building.
Right, so, right, so you're determining if the personal storage use, if that's still what the applicant's planning is, is consistent with what was there before with Colony Marine. So the use question is prior to improvements.
Any of it.
To permits for improvements, right?
So I'm going to ask the applicant, what is your plan for the use of the inside of the building?
Right now, it's just personal storage. I mean, I, that's what, that's what he's using it for. And, you know, the interior, that's literally what he's using it for, just for himself. The, the exterior, like I said, he does want to, you know, fix up the outside parking lot and everything, but literally for the inside, right now, he's just, just looking at personal storage.
Any other Planning Commission members' questions, comments?
Is the office still upstairs being used or going to be used?
The upstairs is a, is an apartment. And that, that is being used at times, yes. And then the, the offices throughout the, the lower part of the, you know, on, on the first floor, those are just still remaining, although not, not being used for much else than storage right now.
But that could change in the future, just, just for my.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Right, I mean.
So he could, so he could rent out the apartment?
He, he does not plan on running the apartment. That's strictly for himself or overflow for his family.
Okay.
Planning Commission members, any more questions, comments?
What were our options again?
Eric. So with the reuse proposal, you're asked to determine if the proposed use is similar to the previous use, the Colony Marine use. It doesn't have to be, you have discretion with that, obviously. It's not a full-scale retail operation like it was previously, but there is some similarities with the storage of recreational vehicles, which we pointed out in the review. Your other options would be to consider the storage as an accessory use to the offices, which offices are permitted, the site zone C2. And then the third option is that personal storage is not permitted in this district and that he would need to pursue either rezoning or another procedure to do personal storage.
Well, my thought would be if personal storage is not permitted, we do have personal storage on apartments on top of a barn. So I, I wonder whether we could deny personal storage within a, an apartment area below and not have anything against personal storage in a barn under the upstairs apartment that's been put in and is being used, I presume.
And, and this is assuming you find that the apartment use is, is a continuation of a use previously established because it's not specifically, that's in our letter. As long as you make, because it was used as apartment apparently in the past. And as long as you find that to be an existing non-conforming use that's continuing, then they could do that and they could potentially have accessory storage associated with that.
At, at what time after it has not been used for a long time do we say it's no longer the existing use? But I, I think, I appreciate that. It could be considered a continuing use.
It could be.
Thank you.
Just to note, the building to the west of that is storage as well.
Yes.
Rose boats, so.
Yes.
What he has in that building is anybody's guess.
Right.
Thank you.
Any other Planning Commission members' questions, comment, either one of the Chrises, anybody?
No, I'm kind of good with it.
Yeah.
Are we understanding what our planner has described, what our first options are or three options are? And if so.
What, what, yeah. Excuse me. Well, was it option two that was more prevalent, I think? You go over option two again?
Yeah.
Eric, you want to go over option two again, please?
That was to allow the interior storage as an accessory use to either the office use, which is permitted, or to the apartment use that was just brought up.
Yeah, now, wouldn't that be better for, if you have future use for that office? If you do rent it out or the, or the upstairs, wouldn't that be a better option? Just asking.
It's a permitted use in the C2 district, so there's no issue with, with doing, going that route, I think.
Well, it basically was a showroom storage for the boats anyways, right? I mean, that's, they, they didn't do any mechanic work there.
No.
No. No, I mean, because I bought a boat from Sea Ray right there. And all they did was just park their boats around there and inside. That's all they did with it. But it's basically storage too.
Yeah, exactly.
That's what it seemed to be.
Yeah. Matter of fact, I bought my boat right there.
Still have it?
Are you implying that all we have to consider what the doors are supposed to look like?
So that, that can be worked through during permitting.
Right.
The use is approved, then they'll need to work with the building department on that.
It would not have to be then anything in front of the Planning Commission, right?
And you need to make a finding that.
Just a finding.
Right, and that includes in the ordinance, bear with me, that no variances to the ordinance are required. The use will be conducted within a completely enclosed building. The reoccupancy does not create additional parking demands. The reoccupancy does not substantially alter the character of the site and the use is in conformance with the provisions of the zoning district, which would be subject to further review of the site plan.
Susan, did you get that as a motion?
Okay, right, I'm assuming it's not in our March 20 review, right?
It's actually in page 21-3 of the zoning ordinance under reoccupancy and reuse applications, item number two.
Okay.
So this is.
Was the number again 21? Oh, there we go, thank you.
So this is a guideline of, on the left is what you're considering, and then on the right is when a site plan's required. So you're, you're either one or the other. So these are the four items that Rod read off that qualifies an applicant for a reuse application. If they meet all these things and they're allowed to do this rather than a full site plan.
That should help with if somebody wants to make a motion. Thank you, Eric. Any further questions, discussions?
Is there some type of setback? Or I don't know if that's the right word or not, with that new overhead door and the close proximity to the road, moving in and out product out of that building, I'll call it product, as it is, being close to the road as far as the safety is concerned?
Yeah, couldn't that be a roll-up door?
That, it is going to be an overhead door that, that, that rolls up, yeah.
Roll up, right?
Yeah.
It does not extend into the area as you roll it up?
No, yeah, it just will go up, yeah.
I think Mark's more concerned about like the length of the trailer and the size of the truck that will be backing in there.
Maneuverability.
It's in a location. I'm sorry, just, just so we're clear, it's in a location where the, where the overhead door would be accessible from the, the entrance coming in to, you know, off the road.
Okay, does that, does that, does that sketch show the curbing just in front of the building?
My question is, on the reoccupancy and reuse application says existing non-residential building of the same use or similar use, which requires no exterior modifications. The use that, if, if they are, I guess for Rod, is if they're planning on doing exterior modifications to the building, does that nullify the reoccupancy or reuse application?
I think it depends on the extent. I mean, it, it, you know, potentially someone could, could have a use reoccupied and then come in for a building permit to add an overhead door. And, you know, that necessarily wouldn't come to the Planning Commission. So I think it's meant to be something more extensive than that.
Okay.
But I think the thing you need to look at is whether you feel comfortable with where that door is and how the maneuvering is going to be and whether it's going to be.
A traffic problem.
Can you see a plan view of that, plan, of that site plan again?
Sure.
And I think the last time the applicant was in front of us, the last question we had at that point was, I think there's three driveways.
Right.
And the applicant or the owner, whomever, was going to choose which one he wanted this door to be and then close off one of the other.
Right. One of the Autobahn closed off, remember?
Yes.
It should absolutely, there's way too many driveways here.
So I'm just, I'm just going back to, it's been over a year, I think. I think that's.
Right.
I went with the door.
The driveway is going to work out here before we do anything.
I'm sorry?
Because the way this driveway situation is, these entries and exits need to be worked out before this door gets decided.
Because, because, yeah, that, you, you need to understand how the circulation is going to work. You need to know which driveways and, yeah, they need to show closing one of those. Or, yeah, at least.
Yeah, I think the, my, my client is willing to close to, I mean, if we need to close one more on the Dyke, he would rather close the center one.
That's fine. I want to see it closed off before that door goes in, though.
Yeah, it would be part of the, it would be part of the, you know, the permit that we would go for. That's what, that's one reason why, you know, I just want to make sure with, with you, like, we definitely have to close off one of the, the entrances onto Dyke Road, correct?
Absolutely.
Yes.
Okay.
So that new door, and, excuse me, that new door going in, is that going to be across from that curbing to the east? That island?
It'll be, it'll be across, I mean, it'll be somewhat kitty-corner across from the larger island curb to the, I guess that would be the south. So.
Okay.
But the, the thing of it, like, I think there's enough room where if a trailer's brought in from the north side entry off Dyke and pulled over toward basically the south, toward the Colony Tower and pull on, you know, pull up, you know, close to the road there and then, and then it would be able to be backed in to, to the door, the new door. And, you know, one other thing too is what we could do is, is shrink, you know, that island just a little bit if we had to, to make that, that one entrance a little bit bigger too. Because these curbs are, they're a little rough right now. So there's going to be some modification, you know, to these curbs anyway. So that is an option we have too, to still keep only two entrances on here, but, but, you know, manipulate this, these island curbs a little bit to, you know, to access. a little bit to, you know, to access the door better.
Okay, which, which entrance were you going to close off, the one to the left, as I'm looking at this, and the one to the right?
The, the cent, the center one would be closed off.
What size of trailer do you think you're going to bring in there?
Just, just like boat trailers and, you know, he's got like a I believe he's got a travel trailer.
I'd like to see a plan above and beyond what we're looking at here.
Thank you, I was just going to say, I think we need to see when you remove part of the curbs, how these little models that we've been playing with at Rod's and Eric's and Matt's presentations that we've been at, how you are going to come in and where that door is going to be located, so that you don't interfere too much as you come in and back in.
Right.
I think we really need to know the distance, I think we need to know the distance between that curb and the building.
Yes.
It says it right there, thirty, it's thirty seven.
I can't see that, oh, okay, so you're talking fourteen feet?
Thirty, it's thirty seven, thirty seven feet to the building from that curb.
Just put your plan in paper.
Fourteen and...
That, that fourteen is up to the parking space, which we're not worried about right now, but but the, the copy I see is like, it shows the curb to the building is thirty seven feet.
Curb to the building, I don't see a thirty seven, but I guess we could figure that out because it shows about, is it fifteen feet? Eighteen feet in the one parking space at an angle?
Right.
And then the fourteen from the top of one?
Okay.
This is over, it, it is definitely thirty feet, a little over thirty feet.
Two.
Right?
Okay, yeah, I see that.
Yeah, but still, you're talking modifying.
Thirty-two feet.
Okay, let me ask a question to Rod and/or Eric. This was brought back in front of us, because it was in front of us a year ago, and we're kind of going over and over the same material. There's been some changes for what they're going to do on the inside, or what they're suggesting they're going to do on the inside. But I thought we were trying to decide, is this a reuse determination? And then do we need to also include what, we need a different site plan, I mean, I'm kind of getting a little sidetracked here, what we're supposed to be doing.
I'm comfortable with, from what I see there.
Well, no, I was actually asking Rod and/or Eric, I want to get this in the right order, so we get this, so we can move forward with the applicant and whether it's with us, if we're comfortable with the reuse, and then if we're not comfortable, then it goes a different direction, and then the modifications for the parking, parking lot, and all that stuff, we've talked about before. And I know what we have in front of us isn't what the applicant's saying they're going to do, so.
I think if, so what's complicating this is, is the proposed improvements. This request, type of request, often wouldn't involve any improvements, such as like a tenant, tenant in a strip mall changing out to a new tenant, that's not even something that may come before you. If, if exterior improvements are going to be more substantial, then it might be more appropriate to do a site plan review and application, rather than just the reuse consideration.
Okay, agree.
So core members, do you understand what we're saying?
That's kind of where I was going at earlier, is because if we just do a reuse, then why we shouldn't have to be tell, the park, the entries off the road and everything shouldn't be an issue, because no modifications. But if we're going to sit, say, you know, they had to close part of that off and stuff, and go by the site plan that was in front of us a year ago, then we should probably have a new site plan submitted.
And, and one of the things they may want to look at is angling that parking in front of more, because that will open up some more maneuvering area, and could make it easier actually to maneuver through there, so it's, it's very tight in the front there. And if there's any room to move some of those parking spaces elsewhere, that would be something to look at.
Right, and on that first site plan, we had so many parking spots identified, forget what it is. But now with the door going in, that's going to remove, what, two anyways?
Probably.
More.
So, I, I, I would definitely encourage them to find other locations for parking spaces and try to clean up that front.
And correct, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we mention at the last time this was in front of us, that we wanted that driveway on Audubon closed off?
I believe you're right.
And I, from my understanding, from, from what's been presented tonight, is we're talking now about leaving that open and closing the, the one, one of the ones on Dyke Road?
Two got to close. Audubon and Dyke.
Only having one, is that correct?
That, that could be left up to the applicant when they resubmit their site plan, they can, they can present something, and then you can react to it.
I think there's three on Dyke right now, and one on Audubon, you should be able to get rid of two fairly easy.
Yeah. Really? Is the, I mean, is the reoccupancy part handled already yet, or? And then you can move on to the, to the site plan? Because it sounded like, since the modifications that we were doing weren't, they, they may not be significant enough to, you know, get real in-depth with changing around the site plan. Am I, am I correct on that?
Will, will the larger door allow you to bring in larger equipment? And longer and bigger and...
Yes, yeah, it, it just provides another spot besides the other one that's already there.
Correct.
Yes.
But there's not a lot of room in Dyke Road to, for a large, we have to consider a larger trailer, larger boat, larger everything, not just the door.
Yeah, because it, it could end up out in the street.
Correct.
All right, I'm going to ask Eric or Rod for some help here, I thought we were originally just going to do the reuse, but it seems like we have some more questions, and it's not strictly maybe a reuse, we have maybe some concerns about the outside.
Well, yeah, it's, it's the introduction of the, of the door that's causing the site improvement issue, so that's a change. So if this was just a straight reoccupancy without an improvement to the site, you'd have one thing, but you're making a change to the site, which is going to change the circulation, change the loading area, so it's introducing the need for site improvements. So that's what's complicating this, as Eric mentioned that before.
So if they were just going to not do the out, or do the door changes, reuse might be an option that we could do, but because he's now mentioned a few times, they want to do the store changes, it's an added difficulty that we need to take care of, correct?
Correct.
But you, you do, you do one route or the other, either it's a reuse, or it's a site plan review, it's not a combination, so if there's going to be exterior modifications, then I would, then they should just apply for a site plan review.
Exactly.
So this is up to the applicant at this point, like we said over a year ago, if this is what you're going to do or want to potentially do, or the changes with the doors, then they need to do the site plan avenue, correct?
Here's my question. If we do a, allow them to reoccupy and say that it's a similar use, and allow them to go in the building, if they go to get a permit for, to add the garage door, then does a site plan have to be submitted and go in front of our, in front of us?
If, if it's going to change the site, yes, to the extent, like if they were just adding a door at a location that was already a loading area, you probably, the building department would probably just approve that. But they're going to, they would have to take out parking and change the access, and that would likely trigger a site plan.
Yeah, I believe that's why this is before you, is because it started with the building department with the overhead door, and they realized it was a bigger change potentially.
So I would like to...
What you're saying, then? Louder, please.
I would like to make a motion for parcel 74-14-181-0085-000, which is 6509 Dyke Road, to allow the storage is, as an accessory to the office use without any modifications that were spoken of before from the original site plan on, from March 20th, 2019.
But I'll second that. Isn't that what we approved to begin with? No, I don't think so.
I don't think we ever approved anything.
No.
We did not approve anything.
Okay. Because the, the one prior year, year and a half ago, whatever it is, had the closure of the entrances and everything else in there, and we, we would, they would have to go back to whatever we tried to put on, and we never signed a site plan, so I don't think we can do that.
Okay.
Okay, wait a minute, we have a motion, correct?
And now we're discussing, I hope.
I believe that it was seconded.
Yes.
Yes.
And that was, and the motion pretty much would allow them to reoccupy the building, but doesn't allow for any of the overhead doors to put in.
That's how I understand it.
Rod, do you have any comment?
Yeah, I guess so, and then if they decide they want to add that door, then they're going to have to submit a site plan.
Correct.
Okay, so we'll leave the, we would leave the openings onto Dyke and onto Audubon open, yes?
As of now, yes.
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes, because we, we never approved closing in a year and a half ago.
Correct.
And just, we're just doing reoccupancy, it sounds like.
Correct, so if we're just doing reoccupancy, we can't really dictate any, any changes, but at the same time, it doesn't necessarily allow them to make any changes, like adding a loading area.
No, they have to go to the building department, then they'll probably have to do a site plan, so.
Correct.
Okay, Sue, do you understand the motion? Do we have Sue?
Yes, to allow storages and accessory use to the office with no exterior modifications.
Planning commission members, you understand the motion?
Yep.
Okay, if they hear a no, then I'll ask to repeat it, otherwise, roll call, Whitey?
Okay, roll call. Keith Fell, not here, excused. Chris Hiltonan?
Yes.
Whitey Simon? No. Christine Holcomb?
Yes.
Didn't hear you, yes?
Yes.
Harold Vane?
Yes.
Mark Borschard?
Yes.
Tom Cozel?
Yes.
Robert Muesli?
Yes.
Kathy Schweickert?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
And the motion was made by
Robert.
Robert and Tom, right?
Yeah, Tom seconded it.
All right, I'm going to move on to item 7B, waterfront fences, community comparisons, please.
Okay, so let's start off with a brief overview, we've had some correspondence, as you're aware, from residents expressing concerns about fences being constructed in the water-facing yard of a lot. We're going to talk about, we briefly talked about last time, we're going to go over the, the current definitions and the requirements, the use standards that apply. And we had also talked about two options, and we're going to dive into those and see if we can get some input and direction. But we're also going to do some comparisons with what, you asked us to look into what other communities are doing, so we're going to go through that, so go to the next slide. So these are the current definitions, I'm not going to go into them in a lot of detail, but as you recall, the key thing for the front lot line is where lots border upon bodies of water, or a river, or a canal, the front lot line shall be designated as the line fronting on the street. So, and then we're going to look at the graphic in a minute, so let's go on to the next page. And then this is the unobstructed yard space, and basically allows decorative fences not to exceed a height of four feet. So if you have a lot facing the water, within that required setback, you have to maintain an unobstructed yard space. That fence has to have no more than 25% opacity or obscuring, so it has to be mostly an open fence. It can be wooden, wrought iron, anodized aluminum, or similar decorative fence, or it can include a vinyl coated chain link fence, or its equivalent, under the current ordinance. So this is the graphic we looked at, which really helps to describe your current requirements. So the road's up at the top, the water is at the bottom, so you have your required front yard, which is between the minimum front yard setback line and the right of way. You can do a four-foot-high decorative fence, but you can't do a chain link fence anywhere in the front yard. So when we look at the rear yard, you have what would be the required rear yard, which is what the, the, the basically the separation between the, the water body and the minimum rear yard setback line, that is your required rear yard. Under your current ordinance, you can have a four-foot-high decorative fence, as we just described. If your house happens to be setback more than the minimum, then the non-required rear yard is that space between that setback line and that additional open area, you can actually have a six-foot fence in that particular area, if you happen to have that extra setback. So let's go to the next one. So we looked at a few different communities that are, have water access, and that includes Ira Township, which is adjacent, City of Port Huron, we looked at Algonack, we looked at Harrison Township, we looked at Chesterfield Township. So we start off with Ira Township. Any lot that abuts Lake St. Clair is considered a waterfront lot, and that portion of the lot abutting the lake shall be considered the waterfront setback, so for residential properties over one acre, only decorative non-confining fences shall be located in the required front yard of a lot, and the key is that, excuse me? Oh, that's who was asking something, the key is under the second bullet there, that is, all fences, whether decorative, non-obscuring, or privacy viewing obscuring fences, or other view obscuring landscaping, shall not be located within the waterfront yard setback without first obtaining special land use approval, so that's a, that's a unique requirement to Ira Township. Go to the next one. City of Port Huron says that where lots are on rivers or lakes or canals, the property shall be treated as through or double frontage lots, and now have required front yards on both water and street frontages, so basically they treat both as front yards. Front yard fences are not considered to be ornamental, front yard fences not considered to be ornamental or chain length, so you can have a three-foot-tall ornamental fence in that yard, that front yard, so that would be either facing the street or the water, but a chain link fence would not qualify as being a ornamental fence. And then if, then there's a specific provision if a fence or railing is proposed over 18 inches, and it does not have a see-through material, such as plexiglass, chain link aluminum, wrought iron, or similar material, then the adjacent property owners on both sides of the property where the fence would be erected must sign an approval to allow the fence railing, indicating that the fence railing will not block their view. And on the next, Algonack, all yards abutting a street shall be considered as front yards for setback purposes, and all lots having waterfrontage shall be considered both the street side and waterfront as front yards for setback purposes. So in that particular instance, ornamental fences not exceeding three and a half feet in height are permitted within front yards, and they shall not be of a chain link or wire construction. they shall not be of a chain link or wire construction. And it has to be more than seventy-five percent open. And then Harrison Township, uh waterfront fencing located um, within a yard abutting a water shall be permitted if only the non-obscuring decorative fence or vinyl coated chain link fence can be installed in the first thirty feet from the seawall or the ordinary high watermark at a maximum of four feet. So they do allow that um, to for that very limited area. Okay, and then Chesterfield. Fences uh. Are offenses that are erected in waterfront districts shall require approval of planning commission as part of site plan review. Um, and that includes for multiple family, office, commercial, industrial, and then the waterfront districts. Such fences shall not be located in a required front yard or enclosed in a required parking area. Only decorative, non-obscuring split rail fences twenty-four inches to forty-two inches high shall be permitted in a front yard. Only non-obscuring decorative aluminum or wrought iron fences not exceeding forty-eight inches high shall be permitted in a waterside front yard of Anchor Bay or the Salt River. Walls, hedges, chain link and obscuring fences shall not be permitted on the waterside front yard of lots on Anchor Bay or the Salt River. So the next page has basically a summary, and you can see it's kind of ironic that um, of the six communities here, um, three of them treat the waterside as a front yard and three of them not. Um, so kind of kind of interesting. So you can see it definitely is all over the the map. Uh, and you can see how chain link is treated differently. And uh, so there there's a lot of different choices, a lot of different options. So let's go to the next slide. So we had talked about a couple of options, and I want to go over those again. Clearly, these aren't the only ones, but these are some you might consider. One is to consider yards fronting the waterfront as front yards, like roughly half of the communities um, do. So you would make both street facing and water facing yards a front yard. This would ban fences in both yards, except for the decorative fencing that is four feet high maximum. And it would ban all fencing within the unobstructed yard area. Um, now for water facing property, this is also going to ban all chain link fencing except any side yard because chain link fencing is not permitted in a front yard. So if you decide to treat the waterfront as a front yard, you're eliminating chain link fencing in both the front and the rear essentially, because then what would be the waterfront front yard, which you now call a rear yard, um, would couldn't have chain link fencing. So another option would be to regulate the height and material for fencing. So expand the type of fences potentially in a street facing front yard only, where when you have the rear yard being a water facing yard, and prohibit fences in the required water facing rear yard, so that minimum setback area. So what this would do, this would open the door to allow a vinyl coated chain link fence in the front yard, but you would no longer be able to have that in the in the water facing yard. Um, and it would only be those cases where you have a front yard facing a street and then a water facing rear yard. You would have that option of being able to put a chain link fence in the front yard. Now you have to decide whether or not you think that's appropriate or not.
No.
And and then the other option would be you don't make any changes at all and you leave it as it is. Um, or some other modification. So these are just, so now you know what some of the neighbors are doing, you know what some of the options we've talked about, and um, the do nothing option is another one. So um, I guess I'll throw it back for discussion and see if you have any questions or comments.
Thank you, Rod. Appreciate your hard work on that.
And thanks to Sri for doing a lot of the research on this too, so.
Oh, I forgot, we didn't introduce Sri, did we? I'm sorry. Thank you. Um, or planning work commission members, questions, comments, who wants to start?
I have, I have a question. I was going through my emails and uh. I missed it before the last meeting, and it was from Leslie regarding one already asking about, and she was saying. That the front yard extends to the public right of way. And she was saying that was a problem. Here's my question. If we are saying that the front yard extends to the public right of way. Already in our ordinance, aren't we technically creating two front yards? Because technically, if you have a body of water. That water is a public right of way. So.
No, it's right of way is defined as a road right of way in your.
Right. Okay, because if we if we. Take it to a right of way period, would that take care of our problems to what it what we're encountering? Because now both become a front yard.
Well, yes, you could do that. Just but remember, the 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 consequence to that is that if you have a property like that, you can't have a chain link fence anywhere except in a side yard. You would be prohibiting chain link fences anywhere. So if you had an animal, a dog, uh, you wanted to have a a place where they could go and roam outside in within a fenced area, as long as you're okay with that, just that's the consequence, though. You would no longer be able to build it unless you put it only in the side yard. So it'd be a very small area, um, unless you had a very large lot.
Well, if if you, I mean, that's my parents have uh. It's not wrought iron, but it's an aluminum fence uh, to look like that in their yard. And I mean, that's usually obtainable to keep a dog in. But I know it's also more costly. So at that point, it would be kind of limiting. You'd still be able to put a fence that could contain in the uh, dog or another pet, but you'd be limiting to sort of by expense, not necessarily.
Well, and the other option, too, you could consider is similar to what Ira does, which is you could um, anybody anytime somebody proposes a fence in the water facing yard, that would require special land use approval. So you would end, they would end up having to show, come into the planning commission, the note, the neighbors would be notified. They would have to show you exactly what the fence is, what it looks like, where it's going to go, how tall it's going to be. And everyone would have a chance to evaluate it to determine whether or not it looks like it's going to be appropriate, or if it's going to obscure vision. And then you could make a decision on a case by case basis. So that is another option that's on the table.
I would almost, if I may say, uh. Approve of that because uh, most people on the island here have seen the fence uh, that is uh, on one side of my house and surrounds the waterfront property of my former neighbor and now the new neighbor, which is a decorative fence. It goes from canal to channel, canal to channel. And at the channel side, it actually goes from the house to either side of the fences. So they had four sections of fencing, and they kept two huge shepherds, a rustle terrier, and later on, two akitas in there without any problem in a what I would consider a decorative fence. Certainly looks all right. I have, I believe, two doors in the fences uh, that go along the shipping channel. And if I ever had to go and follow somebody run through, I would open two doors, one on my side of the fence and one on the other side of the fence, and everywhere, everything worked quite well. And i- in a sense, our ordinance allowed that kind of a fence in the front yard. I I don't see how uh. They didn't choose the fence in the front yard because apparently the lady wanted a front yard fence initially.
Right.
I I would almost think that we can leave it as it is, or, as you indicated, require a uh, site plan to come to the planning commission if you do something in your waterfront property. And then we'd see what goes in. And what's more important, you'd get the input from the neighbors before it's built, not after.
And what we'll end with a public hearing.
Yes, yes.
You know, that that works in in your neighborhood. But like, I think Mr. Burgess' last meeting brought up, there's an easement in the front across his property there between the house and the water. And I went, I have some friends that live across from Danny's here. I went over there and looked. And yeah, there's water that runs between the house and the waterfront. I couldn't tell you if it's in the unobstructed rear yard space or not, but there's service on that side. Um, I think that that's possibly a a problem he's got there, you know, in that area anyways, not necessarily the whole township.
You're right. But I don't think that can ever be enforced by anybody.
Yeah, and I don't think, I don't know, I don't know the, but it just doesn't seem like even putting any fence at all across that is is an issue, right? If something happens and you gotta, they gotta come in there, which eventually they're gonna have to. Um, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Problem.
Yeah, Tom, this is Mark. I spoke with the uh, I had a DT DPW and a bad, actually on the area where uh, Mr. Burgess lives at, uh, there is a a fifty foot easement back there uh, that I'm gonna bring up later, uh, which is a sewer line. And and with that fifty foot easement, obviously, if there's something goes wrong and I need to get to it, well, anything that's standing on that fifty foot easement is going to be destroyed.
Yeah, yeah. So how do we deal with that? And my and my friends, there's two of them there, and they're in in coming right off perpendicular to M twenty-nine, is the sewer runs right out to the river. So they got an easement.
Right. Exactly. So I I think somewhere in this ordinance that we should uh, at least have a uh, consideration for um, easements with underground utilities.
They'll have to because.
Well, you're not supposed to build an easements.
Right.
That's that's right, that's right in the the building codes that you can't build over an easement, especially like Mark said, a sewer easement, they gotta tear it up. You don't know when they're gonna tear it up.
Yeah, that that right now, that I'm sure would be evaluated when a permit for by the building department is.
Sure.
But but if you were to actually go to the site, special land use review, you would have that as an option where you would require they show all easements on a site plan and you could look at.
Right. Exactly.
And I had an issue I wanted to bring up, you know, and this is like a current event issue with everybody flooding and whatnot. I've been seeing a disturbing pattern, I'll call it disturbing, where you got like, say, you got three lots and the the two outside lots, they fill their property and the guy in the middle don't, you know, and they're building like a little wall between their property and the other, and it's flooding down. Um, I I don't think that's right either. I know people are doing what they have to do to save their property. Now, by putting and fencing in on the waterside, isn't it going to inhibit a a owner's ability to uh, protect his property from, say, flooding? You know, if your neighbor's got something in the way and it's causing you problems, the more I look at it, I don't want to see any fence out there, you know, we need. Too many things can go wrong.
Well, just to let you know, Tom, it's illegal to elevate your property.
Well, it's going on all over the place, Mark.
I know.
And if you look around, too, you got yellow tubes, you got black tubes, it looks like a water balloon contest out there, you know? I I we're missing something here. We gotta.
And the dump trucks are coming across at six o'clock in the morning, going down into the flats and anywhere else, and the property is going higher.
Okay, let's let's stay on track.
We're getting off the fence issue.
We're dealing with fences. I appreciate everybody's comments. There's a lot going on in our world, no doubt. Um.
I just don't want them to get in the way.
No, I understand that. I get that. Um, planning commission members, any other comments, questions, suggestions?
I think we ought to pick what maybe Ira Township or whatever, at least pick one or two of those and examine them more thoroughly and see what we can do about that. Uh, and and put in an ordinance on the front yard versus a back waterfront yard. Uh, right now, our, can can you put up the one for Clay Township again with the uh? Schematic there?
Yeah, I don't think ours is that bad.
No, no, ours is actually good.
You just can't go all the way up to the road.
Thank you. Or or up to the river.
So like what you said, whoever made this woman do this was wrong.
So what's the difference?
No, what the the if there was a four foot chain link fence put along the water, it's permitted.
Yeah, it's permitted, correct. I agree. She could have went on both either side of the house, but she was directed to go to the waterside.
And that's that's permitted there.
Yes.
It's permitted, and that's what got this going is trying to.
Someone didn't understand this. How can we simplify it?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you, Tom. I apologize.
They didn't understand the schematic, obviously, someone within our township here and.
Thank you.
We need to make this simpler.
Well, Rod, did you talk to our building departments? Um. Um, but go ahead.
No, we didn't have any specific discussion because what they permitted was, as I understand it, is was consistent with what your ordinance allows.
Correct.
So I think it was just that there were residents that had an issue with it. So the question was presented, well, maybe the planning commission needs to review this to determine if it's still what you want, because this is what happens when someone follows your ordinance, you get a fence like this. And is that okay? Or do you want it to be something different? So this is the opportunity to review that.
Is it also true, though, that they denied a fence in the front yard?
Well, if they try to put a chain link fence, yes, they would have denied it because you can't have a chain link fence in the front yard.
Probably never gonna know that.
Well, they may. They would have realized they could put a decorative fence in there.
Well, um, and another option might be to look at what how you define certain types of fencing. So like a wrought iron fence and a aluminum decorative fence, uh, you may want to allow in a front yard, for example, that could contain animals, but still be open. And you could make that more clear in the ordinance so that it would encourage people to use that front yard fencing and then have greater restrictions on or possibly have a special land use for the um, the waterfront fencing.
I just.
I think if you were to write that up properly, I could definitely make a motion to put that into our ordinance.
So it sounds like if if you're in a, if that's the general consensus, we could draft some language that would essentially make fences that are um, on a waterfront yard and that required yard um, for waterfront facing yard, those would require special land use. And then more explicitly describe what types of fences could go in a front yard and and maybe show examples of what decorative fences could go there so that it would potentially open the door for a greater variety of fences in the front yard that could potentially be used to contain animals, um, but also look um, attractive and have still be more open than closed so that it still doesn't look like you're enclosing in and blocking the view of the front yard. So we could come back with some language like that, and then you could take a look at it. How does that sound?
Perfect.
Like it.
Great. I I we're talking about water, right? But then they could do this on any any front yard.
Yeah.
Well, I I think we should take a look at each location, section by section, like Point Tremble or the island where everybody thinks their water, front of their house is actually the water, which a lot of people don't understand that. Do you know what I'm, do you know what I'm saying? Like, where Point Tremble is, that I mean, everybody thinks that the front of their house is the water because the way they designed and built the houses.
Mm-hmm.
Right, but in that case, they would, what they think is their rear yard, which is the street facing, they would have more flexibility in terms of the type of fencing that could go there under this option.
And they'd have to do the special land use to do the waterside.
Within the within the required yard, correct.
Okay, yeah, okay, I'll go for that. Yeah.
It would cover both aspects, whether the people believe the front yard is the water or the road.
Yeah, it'll cover, it'll cover it both ways. It's just you may think of it one way or the other, but the ordinance will apply in the correct way.
Okay, I'm good with it.
Give a little more control over after the fact, not complaining, have control before the fact. How's that?
I like before the fact, because we never fix after the fact.
Right.
I don't disagree.
Here, here's my question that we have with what we're talking about, we're allowing the vinyl coated chain link in the rear. So if. And I'm just playing devil's advocate here. What if we require. To have uh, the waterside fences come into the. Rear uh. Uh, before us to put a fence up in the rear yard, and we have a meeting. uh, before us to put a fence up in the rear yard, and we have a meeting in because all of this started because, is blocking, I, the fence was in the rear. So if we're, uh, the vinyl coated essentially blocks the view of the water the least, so what are we gonna, I mean, we're probably gonna have people hating us because if they don't want their neighbor to put a chain-linked fence up and we allow it, it doesn't, I mean.
And that's the risk, you, and that's the risk, you're opening yourself up to public hearings where people may walk away very unhappy. And so you, you, that may be something you're, you'll wanna consider, and you may want to just make it so that you have more options in the front yard fence and not allow the fence on the water side um, within the required yard. That may be the way you wanna go because.
Like that.
That makes it so that you don't have that, um, potential negative outcome.
Yes.
Of, of, uh, holding a public hearing and then, um, be faced with very difficult decisions and people walking away very angry, because that could very well happen.
Right, and all, all I'm think, and it's not even so much, you know, having them angry at us for telling somebody, yeah, you can put your fence in there. It's, if we're, depending on where it's at, the neighbors might want them to put a wrought iron fence in, so, or a decorative aluminum fence. And they're okay with it in the, on the water side, but they wanna put a vinyl coated fence in for budget reasons. So now everybody's in there, oh, we want them to put the decorative aluminum fence in, and we say, no, you can put the, uh, vinyl coated chain link back there, and even though what we have in the ordinance allows it now, we're gonna have a lot of people that are sitting there, how can you do that?
Well, and you're gonna have to develop criteria for what, how you're gonna evaluate it. And if you allow it under one circumstance and somebody presents you with a very similar circumstance, you're gonna have to allow it.
Yep.
In that location as well.
Yep.
So you have to be very, um, even-handed and, um, fair in the way you apply that, so that's one, once again, once, one of the risks of doing the special land use route is, um, it, it could create some headaches, so just cautious.
I think I'd almost be more particular in making sure we have the wording and everything set in our ordinance and not have the special land use.
Okay, maybe we'll give you those two options then.
So should we have, I was gonna say, should we have Rod and his group come back with those two options at our next meeting and we can mull it over until then and maybe clarify it by then?
I think so. I'm for that. Sounds good.
Anybody not for it as far as planning commission members? I don't hear any negatives. So Rod, can you and the rest of the group take care of that for us for next meeting, maybe?
We will.
All right, sounds good. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Um, I'm gonna move on to item number seven C, which is master plan action item PowerPoint.
Oh, God. So we've, uh, made, uh, some updates to the document you've, uh, received for the June meeting. Uh, we only provided the updated pages. Um, we don't expect these to be the substantial um, bulk of changes, so, um, that's why we didn't update the full document since what you're, what you have is still valid. Um, but after this meeting, potentially, we'll, um, get you a full updated document and then we can work with Cindy and get you hard copies. Um, since you'll have some downtime to review it. Uh, so I'm just gonna go through the, uh, updates that we made quickly. Um, we were able to, uh, talk with Artie and he provided some, um, input. Um, and this was one of the items he wanted us to add regarding St. John's Marsh. Uh, there's some importance, um, with this project with the DNR and some, um, efforts are underway for rehabilitation, so uh, we wanted to point that out, uh, in the plan document. Uh, we updated the, uh, accurate locations of the mainland fire department and provided some references to the Harson's Island Fire Department. Uh, and also added this picture, uh, in the bottom right of the sheet. Uh, another thing we discussed with Artie was the water and sewer, um, utility, uh, availability and also the, uh, plans for rehab of a main a water line along M twenty-nine, so we've included, uh, that language. Uh, we've, uh, made the language regarding ferry service hours of operations a little more general, um, for the summer hours, um, in case there, there were specific hours, uh, of the day that were referenced that were inaccurate, those could change in the future, so we've made that language more general. Um, one addition to the community facilities map, we've added the DNR trail, and that goes behind Algonack State Park, um, and connects to Algonack. Also, this came up at the last meeting, the Crispin Blue Way, um, that's been added, that's shown in the blue uh, solid line, and then there's a seasonal water, uh, portion, Blue Way, that's shown in the teal dash. And then also where the star is located, um, is the, uh, planned kayak launch. It's an ADA kayak launch on the island, so, and that'll show up on the future land use plan. Uh, we've added, uh, an objective under local economy, uh, regarding aesthetically appealing developments uh, for facades and signage, and this is something that can translate into zoning, uh, ordinance amendments after the master plan, uh, project is done. And then here's that site, it's a little difficult to see here, um, but, um, it's east of the schoolhouse grill, and so we've updated the de- designation for that site. It's three parcels owned by the township to recreation and conservation. Um, the majority of the future land use map changes that we discussed last meeting had already been made. And there were a couple outstanding things that we wanted your feedback on, so we made those updates. That was the mainland north uh, area of the township that's been updated to single-family residential for the rural residential, so that's the top uh, square. Uh, the bottom left square was the east of Sassy Marina, a property that had, um, what we believed was an inaccurate designation, so we're suggesting waterfront residential for that, which would allow single-family developments. Uh, and then lastly, on the bottom is the, uh, county beach that's proposed in the east end of the site, uh, which we'll, uh, show that in a minute. Uh, so here's that, so that's the green, uh, parcels there. We talked to Artie about, uh, that project. Uh, the township's closed on the property and it's our understanding that the county will be taking the lead on developing a beach, a pavilion and park there, so uh, this designation would be more appropriate than, uh, commercial, uh, designation for development. Um, we've added, uh, an existing site constraint for San Souci, uh, related to, um, the lack of a public marina or that you can only access it through private uh, boat docking, so that's something we point out, and the plan will also be updating the future land use map uh, for mixed use, uh, for this area, which, uh, isn't shown. Uh, this was just a typo, uh, that we've fixed. And then lastly, um, we talked with Artie about the, uh, ferry contingency plans, um, that's been a concern. Um, it's our understanding that the Harson's Island Transportation Authority is in the process of being reestablished, so uh, in this action item, we point out that they would be the lead on, uh, pursuing or developing contingency plans if ferry access issues arise, rather than something that the planning commission would undertake, since it's more uh, appropriate for that board and the township board to work through, uh, those issues as, as they've been, so um, that's not something that, uh, we're indicating as a planning, uh, commission task at this time, but we're pointing it out, uh, in the master plan. Uh, so that's, uh, that's the majority of the updates. Um, so, uh, what we're requesting is a vote to send the plan to the township board, uh, to request permission to, to distribute to adjacent communities and affected, uh, agencies and communities. Um, you'll still have time during this process to keep reviewing the plan and we'll be continuing to make edits, but um, forwarding it to the board allows us to stay on the timeline for, uh, potential, uh, adoption in public hearing in October, so that's, uh, what's before you tonight.
If I could just add one brief comment, just, and I know you're all aware of this, but just for the benefit of people listening. The master plan is a long-range policy document. Um, it does not propose rezoning anybody's property. Zoning would have to be a separate action. There would be a separate public hearing, um, for any rezoning action, and, uh, neighbors, uh, within three hundred feet would be notified if a rezoning takes place. And this is not a proposal to acquire somebody's property. Um, it's, it's basically a long-range plan and further action would have to take place for any of these particular items to actually come to fruition, so I just wanted to make sure that was clear.
Thank you.
I very much appreciate that comment, and, um, Eric, thank you very much for the updates, because we are receipt of a couple um, ones of July twenty-first, twenty-twenty, and one is to Artie about some concerns that were voiced at the township meeting, so hopefully, anybody listening, listening in at the moment understood what, um, Rod just explained as far as what the master plan purposes, so thank you both, um. Board members, any questions, more comments?
Well, you know, I, I didn't get a chance to read the new stuff because it was just so small in print, I couldn't print it. I'd like to be able to have a printed copy so I can sit and mull it over.
Yeah, and we can, we can get you that, and, and also just keep in mind, you've got, you're gonna have until October to review this all in depth, and you can still modify this. Um, but when you get to October, when the public hearing's held, you can still make changes, so it's not locked in stone.
Okay, Rod, thank you. That's what I wanted to know, because I, in case we wanted to modify something.
Right, it is not locked in stone until you vote in October.
Got it. All right, great.
Madam Chair, with that being said, um, I'd like to make a motion um, to send to, or on master plan to the township board to request permission to distribute the plan for review by adjacent communities and other affected communities.
Thank you for the motion. Who was that? I'm sorry.
Me, Whitey.
Thank you, Whitey. That's the motion, it's been seconded. Any discussion?
No, I think it's a long time coming. I think we need to see this.
Now we'll start getting input from these other communities, right?
Right.
What goes to our board and gets the permission, so, all right, uh, Sue, do you, did you get the motion? Sue.
Yes, ma'am, I'm good.
Okay, you're good, great. Uh, Whitey.
By the way, that should say adjacent communities and other affected agencies, not other affected communities. It's just a, it's adjacent communities and other affected agencies.
Okay, um, I'll amend, I'll amend my motion to make that correction of other affected agencies versus other affected communities.
Got it.
And it was seconded by Whitey?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Everybody understanding the motion that's made? I would ask for a roll call, please.
Okay, Keith Bell.
Excused.
Excused. Uh, Chris Hilton.
Yes.
Whitey Simon, yes. Christine Holcomb, yes. Harold Main.
Yes.
Mark Borchardt.
Yes.
Tom Cosell.
Yes.
Robert Musley.
Yes.
And Kathy Schweickert.
Yes, thank you very much, Whitey.
You're quite welcome.
I'm gonna move on to item number A, planning consultant's report.
Um, we don't really have anything, um, specific to add. We're gonna have a, uh, I know you got our newsletter last time, we're gonna have another newsletter coming out in August, so look forward to that, and we'll talk to you about that at the next meeting. Did you have anything else, Eric?
Nope.
Okay, good. That's it.
Thank you. Item number nine, ZB A representatives' report, which would be Harold.
Uh, I was not at the last meeting, but the last meeting was to approve a boathouse on Colony Drive. And I did not get the minutes yet, so I do know, do not know how it turned out.
Okay, thank you for the report. Item number ten is board representatives' report, which would be Mark.
Oh, thank you. Uh, we did have a board meeting on Monday, which we attended, uh, in-house, uh, with social distancing. Uh, we approved the zoning, uh, tax amended amendment for the boathouses and the shipping container usage. That's it.
Thank you, Mark, appreciate it. Number eleven is chairperson's report. I really don't have any report other than next month, we may be doing our meetings depending on or we stand with our, uh, executive orders. Maybe live, and we'll have to have some discussions to see how this is gonna work out. I'll update you.
Madam Chair, just in case you didn't know, the, the governor did, um, issue a new order that basically extends these um, ability to do pub, uh, online meetings until the executive order expires. So essentially, as long as there is an, an emergency order, uh, in effect, that's from the governor, municipalities can have online meetings and, and do not have to have in-person meetings, just so you're aware. That's instead of having to renew it all the time, she just tied it to the emergency order. So as long as that emergency order is in effect, you can have these meetings this way. Just wanted to give you that update.
Thank you very much for the clarification.
May I ask a question?
Sure, Whitey.
If we, uh, meet, uh, at the township hall, we're to meet there. Uh, obviously, uh, as Rod just indicated, there's still some, uh, safe distancing, some mat, uh, masks and all this other good stuff. What does that do to the public to be allowed? Would the township, and, uh, Mark may know that, uh, limit the, uh, access to the number of people in that room?
Right, you're gonna have a limitation on people, which is gonna be a real issue. That, that's gonna be the biggest challenge you have is, uh, if you get, uh, you know, forty people who show up, you've got, you've got a problem. Um, or even, or even ten or twenty. I mean, it's, it's, that's the real problem, and that's why most communities are continuing to do online meetings.
And we're talking now about the master plan, you know, there will be some people. Certainly.
I'm just talking about this subject because there is a lot of difficulties. I mean, with Zoom, we can have as many people as we want because you're distancing. Coming in live and in person, it's gonna be much more difficult, and we might have to, you know, we have to have some discussion, so.
What some communities are doing is a hybrid approach too, because you have to accommodate people that may not be comfortable doing in person, so I don't think it'll go back to in-person a hundred percent. Um, a meeting we had last night, they had a person in the boardroom in case people wanted to show up in person, but the meeting was still run over Zoom, so they would check on.
Oh, okay.
Um, are, were there any call-ins? Were there any Zoom? And then was there anyone in person in the meeting room? So they had like a hybrid approach for people that wanted to come in person.
I could see that blended hybrid. We, we've already started that where I work, we're doing it both ways, so yes, it's, um, an evolving, fluid question when it comes to these meetings, so, but I just wanted to throw that out there and have everybody thinking about it, okay? So other than that, I don't have anything else, so I'm gonna go to item number twelve, which is planning commission members' comments. Any comments from the board? If not, I'm gonna move on to item number thirteen, which is public comments. And I am going to defer to Christine Holcomb as far as anybody in the public.
I'm going to unmute, um, George Burgess.
Okay.
Yes. Yes, I have, uh, three comments, uh, to make, uh, after listening to, uh, tonight's meeting. Clay Township is very unique with the amount of property on a river or a lake. Uh, I've heard the number fourteen miles of waterfront, and, uh, that equates about to fifty percent of your properties on the water and fifty percent of your property is inland. So basically, this, uh, issue that we've talked about on the fencing is kind of appropriate when you have that much property on the water. And another thing, the second thing I want to talk about is your, um, ordinances, uh, should, your easement should be considered when allowing any kind of construction in an area. And public utility should always be discussed when, uh, you're allowing fencing, because, uh, that's an obstruction, and although, uh, where I'm at, there is only one fence, but if everybody started to put up fences, uh, that could create quite a problem for your, uh, water department and, and, uh, different, uh, companies that have to service the, uh, the utilities. And so easements are something that should be part of the, uh, plan when somebody's, uh, wants to put up a fence or, or build something. And third, uh, my neighbor, uh, who has a fence in, on the water side, uh, we, you call it the back, that's really the riverside. Um, they have a gate that a lot can allow an automobile to go through. And, uh, recently, uh, they parked their car in the, uh, backyard, which is the water side. So is that, uh, something that should be allowed to allow water, to automobiles on the, uh, parked on the riverside of the property? Um, you know, nothing says they can't put gravel down and make a parking lot out in their backyard. Or even maybe even, uh, put cement down and make a paved parking area. Um, these are things that I think that need to be considered when you're, uh, thinking about, uh, the, uh, revising any of the ordinances. But I thank, I thank you very much for your, uh, attention, and I forgot to mention fifty-nine oh nine Point Tremble Road, George Burgess, Pro Beach, Michigan. Thank you.
Thank you very much, because I, I forgot to mention, um, I think I've repeated a numerous type of public hearing comments and rules, so hopefully everybody understands that, so I'm gonna go back. So hopefully everybody understands that. So I'm going to go back to Christine. They, um, anybody else in the public?
Yeah. I'm going to unmute Carol Sampson. Carol Sampson.
Hello.
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 Can you hear me?
I can hear you. I, can you state your name and your address, please?
Earl Sampson, six zero three nine Point Trumbull Road.
Okay.
Okay, well, I'm, I'm for, with the, with the master plan. So I'm going to keep going with the meeting and, you know, doing what we have to do till October. And then also, um, Jennifer Parker had sent a letter to the planning commission.
Yes, we received it.
Okay, um, she couldn't be on it tonight because she ended up going to the hospital and she just wanted to make sure you got the letter. And were you going to read that or no?
We're all in receipt of it. If anybody on the planning commission isn't, please say so now. Um. I'm not sure I really need to read it. It's going to be included with all the packet that we have. So. It's a rather long letter.
It becomes part of the record.
It is part of the record. That was received through the township and all that information will be on the township website.
Okay. Okay, well, that's all I have to say for tonight.
Okay, please let Ms. Parker know that we did receive her um communication and it is uh on record. Okay?
Let her speak up.
Sorry?
Hello.
Is Sampson, is it okay? You all set?
Yes.
Thank you very much for joining the meeting.
Going to unmute Kelly Court Stenographer. Kelly?
I have nothing.
Kelly?
She said she had nothing.
I have nothing.
Okay, thank you very much.
I'm going to unmute Lori Sisk. Lori?
Yes, hi. Um, my name is Lori Sisk and I have property at six oh five one point Trumbull. And I just, I, I appreciate Rod, what you had said about the zoning and rezoning as well as not a proposal to acquire anyone's property through the master plan. So and, and maybe I'm just unclear. So I just, I, I guess I'm asking for clarity. So the master plan has this Pearl Beach potential uh change in it. And I just wanted to know what is the process for that master plan? I know it, it sounds like it's getting sent to the um board and I just want to know when the community gets to have comments on it. Or if it's still available for changes um as well.
Madam Chair, would you like me to respond?
Sure, go right ahead.
Uh, what, the process at this point is that the um, the plan is going to be sent to the township board by state law. They have to be um basically release it to the adjacent communities for comment. That's a requirement of the state act. So essentially surrounding communities and then agencies such as um, um, the county metropolitan planning commission and um SEMCOG. And others are going to get copies. They will be able to provide comments over the review period. We anticipate that there will be a public hearing in October. Whereas at that point, there, there will be um the availability for the public to comment in person at the meeting or via Zoom meeting if we're having Zoom meetings. However, your written comments are welcome at any time. So if you have specific comments about the draft, once the, once the township board releases that to go to have comments to the adjacent communities. That version of the master plan will be posted on the township website. So you will be able to review that version. And if you have specific comments you'd like to make, you're welcome to make those in writing at any time. And that will become part of the record that the planning commission will consider at the time of the public hearing. That draft plan can be amended at any time up until the point where the planning commission acts on it after the public hearing in October. So it's really just a draft at this time. And if they choose to make changes, um, they would have a public hearing and then they can vote to modify it. Before actually adopting uh the master plan. So that's the process.
Thank you very much for that, Rod. I very much appreciate that. And then um the zoning and rezoning and then the proposal to acquire anyone's property, that's, it sounds like it's pretty far down, down the road. And is that years or is that five years, ten years? I'm specifically asking for Pearl Beach, obviously.
Well, um, and through the chair, um, the master plan has a long range vision and we don't really know when certain parcels might be ready for, for change. And there, there's a couple ways that happens. One, either a property owner petitions the township for a change of zoning. Um, and that's how potentially you could have the zoning changed to, to meet the master plan. Or potentially the township could initiate a rezoning. Now regardless of which way that happens, there's always going to be a public hearing. Um, and there's going to be notice given. And uh, the public will have an opportunity to come before the planning commission and offer comments before any action takes place. And then the, the, the acquisition of property by the township board for public purposes is something that could take place at any time too. The township board just acquired land for a county park. So they have been working towards um doing that. And that's in the east end area closer um uh to, we're across from where the Kroger area is. So now we don't know when that's going to happen. Once again, this, the, the, the acquisition of property for specific public purposes can take place whenever the township board sees fit. Because they're the ones that do that. That's, the planning commission doesn't acquire property. Only the township board um purchases property.
And what is the action or what is the, and I'm not a lawyer, so I have no idea about this and then I'll, I'll move on. So you guys can all get on with your daily life. Um, what rights do the individual homeowners have if the township says we want to buy your property?
Well, um, just in very general terms, they can negotiate a price with you and purchase it. Or um if they feel that they can't reach an agreement, they could go through what's called eminent domain and attempt to acquire it. And then that requires um court action to prove that there's a public purpose. And then you would have to be offered a price that is considered to be consistent with the market value of that property. That's a very general term. I'm not a lawyer, but I'm just giving you an overview of how that generally works.
Okay, so I've heard eminent domain before. I just wanted to get a clarification on that. Okay, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you for joining our meeting, Christine.
Unmuting LG Stylo four.
Hello?
LG Stylo four.
It's showing still muted on my screen.
Yeah, mine too.
They must have it muted there.
Patty's iPhone X.
Hello there. Can you hear me?
Yes, can you, can you please state your name and address?
Sure. This is Patricia Newman-Bane and I'm at seven fifty-seven North Channel. And my question is, I submitted documentation for reoccupancy. I purchased some property down in San Souzy on Harson's Island and submitted paperwork to the township. Now I'm understanding, now I'm meeting some additional um paperwork. A site plan to be exact.
This is Patty?
I.
Yeah, I have to excuse myself.
I was going to say.
I, I have to excuse myself.
And may I, may I suggest Patty that um. You contact the township tomorrow because I believe there's other things that the township has to the building department. Had a discussion with either you and or the other person who owns this property. So. That's the best I can tell you at this point.
Okay. Well, thank you, Kathy. I'll do that.
All right. Thank you.
Uh huh. Bye-bye.
Thanks for joining the meeting.
Yeah.
Um, Christine?
I think that's it.
Okay. No other public, as far as we can tell, wants to say anything that we can tell?
No.
Okay. All right, then I'm going to move on to item number fourteen, which is adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, that was uh Whitey and Christine?
Yes.
Okay, all in favor?
Hi.
All opposed. Meeting is adjourned and thank everyone very much who joined. Um, and hopefully we'll see where we go next month. Okay?
Yep.
Night, everybody.
Take care.
Stay healthy.
Ciao.
Yep.
Thank you to the planners also.
Rod, thanks, Eric.
Is from Web, Giffles. That's that uh, company that uh. Yeah, they, they, they do um.